Yeah, I do have seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call roll.
Mr. Jim Benage.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one. Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 19-23.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Appreciate that. With all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we open with a prayer. Honored to have Dr. Lindstedt. Is he not seen? I'm okay. Hope everything is okay with him. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silent prayer, if you would, please. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask if we have any additional agenda items that need to come before council this evening. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our November 2019, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, next is appropriation ordinance 19-23. This is in the amount of $250,841.15, which there's nothing really too crazy in this one. All the, a lot of our typical day-to-day operational expenses in this one.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
We started in Bel Air Park, the rec center came up here. The parking lot at the rec center is way too dangerous for our children to be out there. Those of you that have been here quite a few years, remember all that. The last thing, you all know how I feel about Skyping in. Yes, it's technology moving forward, but we voted to see you on the bench. The only towns I could find that does this, that I called, were only one. You can run for office. You ran for office, fill the seat with your body. You gentlemen, listen to Ms. Lynn. She's been around as long as I have. She's probably knows as much, if not more, about this city than I do. The city has a history book. You may want to read one. Well, I've rattle on long enough. Best of luck to all of you, and take care of the great city of Bel Air. Thank you. That's enough.
And I see one up here with my name on it, too. So we appreciate, appreciate that, too. So, you know, like I wrote in the breeze, people said, I've been asked a couple times, how do I want to be remembered? And like I said in the breeze, you know, my grandmother told me and taught me to always leave a place better than the way you found it. Now, she used that because she wanted me to, you know, clean up and pick things up and put things away, I later learned. But that was a lesson that, you know, one of those pearls of wisdom that I carried on from her. And I can proudly and honestly and ethically say that Bel Air is a lot better now than the way we found it. I don't say that to brag. I say that because all of us up here deserve credit. We've all worked hard moving this city forward. When you look at growth and development opportunities, and kind of like what council member Martin just said, this land is not a burden, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for greatness. It's an opportunity to continue to move us forward. We were more than halfway, we're more than halfway through paying off the debt, we're more than halfway through, you know, moving past all of that stuff. You know, I was here, you know, when I first became mayor six years ago, we had just come out of a time where there was serious, serious consideration, conversations at the State House, at the county courthouse about giving up the city charter, about tuck and tell and running. That's where we were. And we've worked hard to develop the vision of moving us forward. You know, one day I look out, I see former council member Ken Lee's here. When he and I were on council, and then Mayor Harold Smith made a lot of great strides to, to get us through that time. And I look at where, you know, Sunflower Commerce Park was a field, wasn't even a wheat field. I don't think you could get wheat to grow out there. I mean, it was, it was a dirt field. And look at it now, because of some of the things he put in place. I look at all of the past mayors, and I think about the conversations I've been able to have, you know, with our past mayors, O'Neil and Brookhauser and Dale Walters and, and all of those that, and Mayor Ackerman. And, you know, we've had those conversations over the years, you know, when I first started to run and talked with them. And to hear about everything that they went through to get us to where we are today is remarkable. So I owe a great deal of thanks to all the past mayors and everybody here. The, you know, we joke up here about all the Jays, well, you know, all the Ts down at, in the staff with, it starts with Ty, who's probably the best damn city manager you're going to find in this state. And I mean that. And Ted, for the way he presents his budget to us and is always an open door, probably giving us way more detail sometimes than we even want, but the way he anticipates questions before they're asked. And I can think of a couple other times where I've called and have had, because this happens, developer, somebody wants to come in and they're going to be at City Hall in 30 minutes. Can we meet? And when I call Ty, or I call Jackie, or I call Twila downstairs, by golly, you walk in and it looks like we've been planning it for five days or five weeks. I mean, we have an amazing staff here, and Melissa, and I think, you know, Tristan, who I've worked with quite a bit, who's, you know, done a tremendous job branding us with On the Edge, because this city is on the edge of greatness. It truly is. We've turned the corner. And I can't wait to look and see, see the next chapter, so. But I thank you guys so much for everything.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you for your service. I know nobody presented you with the plaque. I see there's a plaque there, and I just want to thank you. I know you've been here six years as mayor, and was it two years before that as council member?
Four years.
Four years as council member.
Decade.
And before that, you were even on the economic development. So I want to thank you for your time and your service to the city, because it has been good, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, we're going to turn things over now. We're going to ask that Mayor like Jim Benage, Dr. Joel Schroder, and Diane Nguyen would line up down here.
I, Diane Lynn.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The ordinances of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
And the ordinances of Bel Air, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city council member.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city council member.
For the city of Bel Air.
For the city of Bel Air.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Dr. Joel Schroder, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Dr. Joel Schroder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
And the ordinances of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city council member.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of city council member.
For the city of Bel Air.
For the city of Bel Air.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Benage, if you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name, please.
I, Jim Benage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The ordinances of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
The ordinances of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
For the city of Bel Air.
For the city of Bel Air.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Okay, so thank you for everyone who's been here, and thank you for the new council members and existing council members. We will call a 15-minute recess, and reconvene at 7:38.
Yeah, you do have to push the button. Okay. Good evening again, everyone. It is 7:39, so I'm a minute late. Sorry for that. We'll reconvene in the meeting and please, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Dr. Joel Schroeder.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
And Ms. Diane Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you. Let me get organized a little bit here. Got a few papers. Okay, well, next on the agenda is a public hearing for the state statutes required when a budget amendment is being contemplated. Public notice must be given and a public hearing held. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the proposed sewer budget amendment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and share your comments. Hearing none. I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have first and second. Any discussion? Can we have a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that vote carries four to zero. Thank you. City requested appearances, item eight. There are no city requested appearances for this evening, so I think we will bypass that. Citizen concerns. Any citizens who would like to speak to the council on any concerns this evening, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I'll move on to reports. So we start with the council member reports. The councilman member, Elshoff, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report. On November 21st, I attended the CCUA meeting. That's the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority meeting. So we had a couple of things on our agenda. There is a Bel Air well that needed pumping equipment that was part of a repair on the well, so... And then we also had a variable drive installed at the plant. And as well, we had a... An item that included installing a new grip pump. And a grip pump is an important piece of our operation there that... Grip pumps pump a lot of the sediments and things that fall to the bottom, and they do a lot of hard work. So, anyway, grip pump, that's kind of an interesting thing to get installed, but... And then also, the CCUA took delivery of a new work truck. I believe it's a new F-250 that we approved several months ago. It finally was delivered, and the plant manager and staff are quite happy about that. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nguyen.
Very short report, but I do plan to attend a group-sponsored regional legislative policy summit on employment skills and training, and that is happening on December the 6th.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilmember Schroeder.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report.
Thank you. Very brief report. I, first of all, just, I'm humbled and honored by the awesome support and incompetence in the citizens of Bel Air. My commitment to citizens is to do my best to not let you down in your support, and I ask for your prayers for me and for this council, that we will make decisions that are the best for the common good through the guidance of our Lord, as is His divine will. On our agenda tonight, we have several appointments that need to be confirmed and made also. And then we have a couple of agenda items with some development projects that are very exciting for us to have with all the things that have come down in the last two months. It's just kind of like, wow, what happened? But that's great. It's good news. So I'm glad it's going on, so... So moving forward, does need a report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to briefly cover two items that the council will be seeing shortly. One is a conditional use application, and another is a zoning item. Both of those come from Planning Commission. Planning Commission has conducted a hearing on both of those items as required in the city code. The public hearing, once it's complete, citizens can apply, can file a protest petition for a 14-day period. That 14-day period has ended, so now both items are at their governing body level. The zoning item, the governing body can either follow the recommendation Planning Commission provided in your packet, they can do something different, or they can deny the recommendation, or deny action and send the item back to Planning Commission. So the governing body gets to really do whatever they'd like in that situation, depending on whatever appropriate concerns they have with the way that lot is used. However, the conditional use item is different in that the Planning Commission can... The governing body can only accept dedications of the public right-of-ways. So when the plat was put together, there were public right-of-ways dedicated to the city, and the governing body can accept those or not accept those. They don't get to approve or make final approval to the plat. So just a brief kind of summary of two items that council will see. I will be discussing more Planning Commission items as they come up.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned, I think probably a month or so ago, that WAMPO, which Bel Air is a member of, is doing an online survey for their next transportation improvement plan. So what WAMPO does is they get funds from the federal government, and then they expend those or grant those to projects within the metro area. So Bel Air, Wichita, Sedgwick County, there's a number of us that are all members of WAMPO. And so Bel Air put in a number of projects. Woodlawn is one of those that's already funded, and we'll get construction next year, but 45th Street, further up Woodlawn, Rock Road, Oliver, all of those, we put those in the plan, and then they're going to do some ranking based on public input. And that's not the only ranking tool they'll use, but that's one of them. So I just wanted to encourage tomorrow by 5:00, it's the last day, so if our citizens have not gone online at the WAMPO website, or you can access it from our website, please go in and vote basically for the Bel Air projects, because that helps us get higher on the list, because there's community support for those. I wanted to mention that this Saturday is Christmas in Bel Air, and that's here at City Hall from 5:30 to 7:30. There'll be treats and Santa and music and kids' activities, so hopefully everybody can come out to that. And then, again, this year, we're doing our Christmas lighting contest, so the deadline to enter is December 13th. So council generously gives the first place a $250 gift card, second place is $150, and third place is $100. And again, the idea is to get people to come out and look at our lights. So wanted to let residents know, and I noticed it was on Twitter today, and so it's going out on Facebook and such, so... And I would like to welcome Ms. Nguyen and Dr. Schroeder and Mayor Binaj, and look forward to working with you all. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may amend my comment.
Sure.
I kind of got turned around. We have a conditional use, a zoning item, and a replat. So the replat is the one that council cannot accept, cannot do anything but accept dedications. The other two items, council can vote to do anything that they want. So I do apologize for that.
And these will be coming up in two weeks?
These are before council today.
Oh, these are the ones that's before council? Okay, okay. I wanted to make sure I was clear on it, because I thought you were saying there was something coming up in a couple of weeks, but okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On the WAMPO thing that Mr. Lacher has mentioned, I have been participant in WAMPO as an alternate for the city, and WAMPO does fund these projects at 80% of the construction cost, which is a big boost for Bel Air for those that we can get in there. So I really encourage citizens to get online and really go in there and let them know what projects we put together. Mr. Lacher's done a great job getting several projects put together on that, him with our city engineer, Ann Stevens. And so please get on the website and let WAMPO know what your interest in those projects are, because if we can get that 80% funding on those projects, that's a big help for the city to be able to move forward with some of these streets and roads that we need to work for. There are only the common roads, the common access roads. There won't be private streets, residential streets, but that is a big help, yes, so... Okay? Thank you. Move on. We have ordinance resolutions and final actions. So the first item is consider approval of the 2019 sewer budget, sewer fund budget amendment, if I can get my words straightened out and not be dyslexic. It says, "In 2018, the sewer budget contained funds for a couple of capital improvement projects. Those projects did not get completed in 2018, but rather in 2019. As a result, the 2019 sewer budget did not include those expenditures, so a budget amendment is required to expend those resources this year." Our finance director is here with some more in-depth explanation and can answer any questions. So Mr. Henry, would you like to approach the podium?
I think I addressed it last council meeting, but I guess we've got some new faces here. Really, this all started in 2017. We found a mop head in one of our lift stations. We had a few other ones go out. Those are major expenses to repair. When 2018 or 19 rolled around, 18 rolled around, we were a little scared to go ahead and start these projects, which delayed them to the end of 2018, started 2019, so that's why we're seeing this budget amendment. It says no effects on property taxes, no effect on mill levy, nothing. It's only a sewer fund amendment. So any questions, I can answer.
And these are funds that we'd already had in reserve someplace?
Yes, simply reserves, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2019 sewer fund budget amendment as published and authorize all required signatures.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And any comments, questions, concerns? Call for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Okay. Next item is consideration of appropriate appointing Mayor Binaj as governing body representative of Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Board. The position was previously held by David Austin, and as a member of the CCUA maintains three positions on the board, as does Park City. Bylaws of the CCUA require a minimum of two of three positions to be governing body members. David Austin was a member while being mayor. As a result, I would like to take his position.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Mayor Jim Binaj as a governing body representative to the CCUA board.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And any comments, questions?
I have a comment.
Certainly.
I noticed that you also have noted that you would like to appoint yourself to a couple of other positions very similar to this. During the campaign, it was brought to my attention, because I wasn't necessarily aware of it, but that you had not attended quite a few of the council meetings. And all of these, the CCUA and the Public Building Commission and WAMPO are stellar needs that need to be filled. It concerns me a little bit that you've named yourself as candidate for three of them.
Okay. And I appreciate that concern. So the CCUA meets 4:30 on the fourth Thursday of each month, right? And I have blocked my schedule to attend those as much as physically possible. The PBC is, meets only at HAWK when there is an issue to discuss. And so those meetings, depending on how active we are, may or may not occur at all. Hopefully, they'll be very active, okay? So, and then the last one is the...
WAMPO.
WAMPO, okay. And I have been involved with WAMPO. And it is my intention with the WAMPO to continue to do what we've been doing with Anne Stevens. This is only a correction of a technical error. We actually are technically in violation of WAMPO laws, or bylaws, because governing elected members are supposed to be the primary. And I do not see a change in Ms. Stevens' role in WAMPO there, okay?
Okay.
It's just that when I'm there, I'll be voting, and when I'm not there, she'll be voting.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I'm the newbie here.
Okay. Well, that's a fair question, so. Very good. Okay.
I have no objection otherwise, but...
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you. Not used to this yet. Okay. Item C is, Bel Air currently has two governing body members on the CCUA. Oh, we just did that one, didn't we? All right. So Bel Air currently has two alternatives to the CCUA, Betty Martine and David Floyd. Am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, I think we're in for item C, which is your recommendation of my appointment.
Okay. I'll get there. Thank you. Okay. So we have two, have two governing body members on the CCUA board, myself and Jeff Elshoff, and one citizen member, Ken Lee. Park City has three board member positions as governing body members. So Justin Smith has expressed interest in serving on the CCUA board. And I talked with Ken Lee about this, and he is happy to move to as an alternate. So any concerns with Justin taking a position on the CCUA board? May I have a motion to approve Justin's appointment?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Justin Smith to the CCUA board.
Second?
I have a first and a second. Any other discussions, concerns? Going to take the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say aye, sign, sign. All right. So item D, Bel Air currently has two alternatives, Betty Martine and David Floyd on the CCUA. And alternates are key to allowing regular board members to miss on occasion. Ken Lee would like, would be a good alternate, as well as having served for the last couple of years. He has, he, Ken, by profession, is an engineer, so he has a lot of insight that he could add to the CCUA, and he has done that, I'm sure. So I think he's a, would be a good alternate. So is there a motion? Any discussion on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ken Lee as an alternate representative of the CCUA board.
Second.
Very good. First and second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. So Public Building Commission appointment, the bylaws of the Public Building Commission state the three members board must consist of mayor, one council member, and one Bel Air resident. Being sworn in as mayor this evening, I need appointment to, I will need appointment to the PBC board. Is there a motion to approve my appointment to the PBC board?
I move to appoint Councilmember Schroeder as a member of the Bel Air Public Building Commission.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G, Public Building Commission appointment continued. Bylaws of Public Building Commission state one member must be a Bel Air resident. Gary O'Neill has served in that seat since 2015 and is a past mayor, and he is willing to serve, continue serving if reappointed. Any discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I think that would be excellent, and I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Gary O'Neill to the Bel Air Public Building Commission.
I'll second that.
First and second. And I do want to say that I did talk with Gary about this, and I think that having Gary in there, he has a lot of knowledge of the city, a lot of the history of the city, and so keeping him engaged in the city, I think, is a good thing for the city to do. So hearing a first and a second, I call for a vote.
I'll...
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. City code requires a council president to be elected annually. This person leads council meetings and represents the mayor when I am out of town. I've talked with Jeff Elshoff. He has been on the city council for two years and is willing to serve as council president if that is the wish of the council. So is there a motion to elect Jeff Elshoff as council president for next year?
Mr. Mayor, I move to elect Councilmember Jeff Elshoff as council president for one year.
Second?
Second. First and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The bylaws of Bel Air Land Bank state the governing body of the city shall also be the board of Land Bank, on the board of Land Bank. Since David Austin and Jeff Hawes are no longer on the governing body, and Joel Schroder and Diane Nguyen were sworn in tonight, Joel and Diane need officially appointed to the Land Bank. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Joel Schroder and Diane Nguyen to Bel Air Land Bank?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to appoint Diane Nguyen and Dr. Joel Schroder to the City of Bel Air Land Bank.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Call for a roll, a vote, not roll call, but it's a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? So Bel Air is a member of the Wichita Metropolitan Planning Organization. As a member, we receive one voting seat on the policy board and at least one alternative voting delegate. WAMPO by law state that voting delegate should be an elected official. I have been serving as an alternate, and as mayor, would like, would be happy to serve as our voting delegate. Any concerns with me becoming a voting delegate? We can discuss.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Mayor Jim Benage to the WAMPO Policy Board as Bel Air's representative.
And we have a first, a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
First and second. Any more discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So as a member of WAMPO, we need to designate an alternate voting delegate. I would, should not, should I not be able to attend a meeting? Anne Stevens has been very involved in WAMPO from the staff and standpoint, and I would suggest that she would be the alternate voting delegate. Are there any concerns with our city engineer becoming the voting, the alternate voting delegate to WAMPO?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we confirm the mayor's appointment of Anne Stevens as Bel Air's alternate to the WAMPO Policy Board.
I'll second.
First and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. Moving on, considering approving the final plat of Bristol Hallows. And this is a new development coming along on 53rd Street. The owner, 25 acres located in the south side of 53rd Street between Oliver and Woodlawn, has created a plat for roughly 66 residential lots for townhomes. And I did get clarification that is twice that many, because there are going to be duplexes, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the plat and development is called Bristol Hallows. Public notification for the proposed plat was given as required. The Planning Commission reviewed the plat at their November 14th meeting and voted to recommend approval. It is now comes to the city council for final approval. Are there any questions for staff concerning this development? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the dedications within the final plat for Bristol Hallows and authorize all required signatures.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. Conditional use permit ordinance. So the owner of Homestead Senior Housing Development, located on the southeast corner of 53rd and Oliver, would like to construct a clubhouse for the residents. And we had discussed this probably six to nine months ago, this project, and maybe it's been longer than that. I don't know. I don't remember exactly how long, but it's been a while, but they're now ready to move forward. So our city attorney, Jackie Kelly, can further explain the conditional use permit and the ordinance on the agenda.
So this is the item that Bristol Hollow has certain residential units on the lot, like the duplexes. They were wanting to add an accessory structure that will be used as a clubhouse. And that is the item that Planning Commission reviewed and discussed whether it fit the character of the neighborhood, whether the size was obtrusive, whether it added to the appeal, whether it was appropriate, an appropriate accessory use. And they concluded that they would make the recommendation to council to approve that conditional use. They had a chance to speak with the engineer and ask detailed questions, and even discuss some of the setback issues, which, after reviewing the plat afterwards, they found out the setback issues weren't necessary to discuss any further. So they're bringing the conditional use to council at this time with a recommendation that council approved.
Thank you. And I will say that when this first came up earlier last year, talking about this project, I did go look at some of Homestead's other developments, one in Hayesville and one in Derby. They are nice developments. They do, they do a very nice job, very stand-up job with their developments. So I really encourage this thing to move forward. So this is a motion, this is a ordinance, so it will require a roll call vote, but is there any additional discussion before we call for a vote?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one question. So looking at these two items, there's the conditional use ordinance that's on our agenda, and then also the change in zoning. I read in our, in our summary that the homes that they're planning to build on this property would actually be okay to be built in a commercially zoned property. And so as I look at this holistically, it almost looks like we're changing the zoning from commercial to residential, and then approving a conditional use to allow something that's not residential to be built on that property, when all of it together could have just been built on the zoning as it's built. And so I'm just, I'm curious what, if I'm understanding that correctly, or, you know, if we just did nothing at all, wouldn't everything just be all right for what they're planning to build there?
I could begin to answer that, but then the applicant may want to weigh in with more detail. But the C1 could work, because it's a, it's a, they're rental units. However, the more appropriate uses in R6 with duplexes, it does allow different setbacks and allows less specific requirements that a C1 just wouldn't accommodate. So they'd have to come back to Planning Commission with setback questions, height questions. It's just, it's harder to fit a residential-style unit in a commercial zone. Also, the accessory structure is a clubhouse, so I'll let the applicant elaborate on that. I don't, I really don't remember what the rest of your question was.
Well, I was just curious, because it kind of looked like we were changing the zoning and then providing an exception to that zoning to allow what they wanted to be built in that area, when, if I'm understanding it correctly, everything that we're looking to build there could actually already be built with no exceptions, as it's currently zoned. And so that's kind of how I was understanding this. And so given that, I was trying to understand why this is before us.
Right, the setbacks for C1 would be different.
It's the setbacks.
And other, other building features. So parking is different for C1 than R6 and other matters. I was kind of wondering.
And I think one of the other things, too, is that it helps protect the development, because that whole corner is zoned commercial, and they'll phase it in. And so from a development standpoint, if something would happen where they would determine that they couldn't phase it in, or, you know, didn't want to continue building, then you'd have a portion of that as commercial, and that helps protect the residents, that it's got to be some type of residential that would go in first to them and not commercial. So that's another, so there's several pieces of why we do that. That's one of them, the ones that Jackie mentions are other ones, so.
Well, I appreciate that additional context, because just looking at it without that, it looked like we were changing it and then making an exception to what we were changing it to, and maybe doing nothing at all would have just allowed everything to be built there, and so it's just a bit confusing there.
Yep.
I had a few questions on this. How long, so this isn't land that the city owned, correct? This is somebody else sold it, right? How long did they have it on the market for?
Oh, I would guess, it's probably been on the market for 15 years, 20 years, maybe. It was originally where the Iron Gate is now, which is just right across as you leave Central Park. A developer owned all of that land, basically from south of 53rd, from Woodlawn to Oliver. And originally, that was all platted as chapel landing. And so there were numerous phases in there and such. And the developer never moved forward on the development of chapel landing. And so that's why it's been, been owned by that developer for probably 15, 20 years. And then he decided that he didn't want to continue developing, and so he started selling off pieces. So the developer of Iron Gate actually purchased where Iron Gate is now, and they did a replat. This Bristol Hallows is another piece that's coming out of that, that was bought from that original developer. And so that's why it was called a replat, because he's putting in something different than that chapel landing was. Now, in chapel landing, that original corner there was, that's where the zoning came in as commercial, because when he put that whole plat together 20 years ago, you know, he was looking at the corner at 53rd and Woodlawn and 53rd and Oliver to be commercial. So right now, if you look at the corner of 53rd and Woodlawn, that's also zoned commercial. So...
Because in the, some of the reasoning for doing it, it talked about being out, it had been on the market for a long time, and I was just kind of curious what number a long time was.
From the perspective of Homestead? Because you're, you're the developer.
Good evening. Phil Meyer with Baughman Company. I'm agent for the applicant tonight.
Thank you.
I don't know that I have anything to add. I'll clarify... I'll clarify, the developer did sit down and have a good conversation with city staff when we started this and we went over the pros and cons of developing this with the C1 zoning and rezoning it to the B6 and doing the conditional use. And when we got done with that conversation, developer thought it was probably in his best interest to go ahead and do, go through the zoning process and had no issue with that. So we were in mutual agreement that this was the best approach for both parties. With that, I'll answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, with that, I will. Is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve an ordinance approving a conditional use on certain properties owned C1, located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And with that, we'll do a roll call vote. So I am first on list for some reason, so I'll vote affirmative. Jeff Elsop?
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
... property listed within the corporate city limits of Bel Air. And the owner, Homestead Senior Development, located the same location we just talked about, 53rd and Oliver, like to construct clubhouse for the residents. Am I reading the same thing over again? I am, okay. Okay, again, on the right page. So this far so C1. City Attorney Jackie Kelly can further explain any other questions we may have.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor? I motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification.
Second.
First and second. Okay, again, this is a roll call vote because it is an ordinance, so I will vote affirmative. Jeff Elsop?
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
Okay, so future issues. So the vacancy policy, per council vacancy policy, I ask citizens' interest in being appointed to fulfill the remaining two years of my city council term and send a letter of interest to me. So just to clarify what this is, so the process for replacing a city council member is there's an application and it's a 45-day application period. And then can vote based upon an appointment I make of a person to replace me on the city council. So I am announcing that vacancy tonight, and that starts the 45-day clock. So we would take applications from now until January 20th. And we could approve a new council member as early as January 21. I don't know if that will happen, but that's the timeframe it's going to take. So the process to apply is to send a letter of interest to me, either a resume or just a letter of interest or any pertinent data that you want. Best to send it to my Bel Air email address, which is jbenage@belairks.org, or no, .gov, I'm sorry. I'll get the right ones here yet. So it's jbenage@belairks.gov. And if you don't remember that, you can always find it on the website because it is there as one of the city officials. I don't know where it is right now, but last I looked, it was still a council member. So just look for Councilmember Jim Benage and you'll find my email address. I don't think they're going to change it now that I'm mayor, so. Okay, so that's what we'll do. And then the council will be able then to decide who they would like to select of those that send in a letter of interest. So that officially begins now, okay? So moving on, we have three openings on the Bel Air Tree Board and three openings on the Planning Commission. So I'd like, so one position for the Planning Commission and two have to be, that one position has to be a resident of Bel Air and the two positions need to be residents within the three mile radius of Bel Air, but not a resident of another city, which is a really tough act to follow because that means you have this limited sphere of folks or land available. But so if you do know of anybody, or if there is anybody listening that is interested in those positions, please send a letter of application to myself, again, at the email address I gave you. There is a form you can fill out. If you go on the website, there's a form for volunteers and that can be filled out as well, if you'd like to do that instead. But still, send it to me and then we will consider those positions.
What's the timeframe on those?
There is not an exact timeframe on those. Obviously, we don't like to leave the Planning Commission open positions very long, but we'd like to get those done as quickly as we can. The Tree Board, Mr. Northwall, if I say his name right, Northwall, I did speak with him. He would like to have a meeting sometime in January with those that are interested. So I would need to see those, so. And I'll honor that process because that's within our guidelines here.
And what's the total that are on those boards?
I have that.
99 questions.
So Planning Commission has, six, seven, it's supposed to be seven positions. There's only, actually now, there's only four. Because we've had one gentleman move out of the city and Dean Ross has resigned, right? Okay, so we now only have four on the Planning Commission. So we need to beef that back up. And then on the Tree Board, we have, there's seven positions, but three are vacant. One's been vacant for some time and two are recent resignations because they moved out of the city. Okay, so once you move out of the city, you can't be on those boards, so.
Thank you for answering. My next question.
Oh.
Why are we having this many vacancies all of a sudden?
Yeah, all these people.
Most of them are moving.
Have moved, that I'm aware of. Okay, I don't know of any other reason that they're leaving, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Question maybe for our city attorney on the Planning Commission structure. I know we've had at least one of the non-resident vacancy openings, or one of the non-resident positions vacant for quite a while, maybe the entire two years that I've been on council. And I'm not even sure that we've had anybody apply for those positions. The non-resident spots on that board, are those required by state statute or are they required by the policies that we have in our city ordinances? Do you know?
Yes, those are required by the policies we have in our ordinance. By having two members in that unincorporated area that the mayor spoke of, we can influence development that happens in that unincorporated area, such as if, I think, one example that I thought was a good one was if Wichita decides to build on a fringe that would impact with that when it comes to what happens within that area at the metropolitan county level. So it is something that this council can think about, whether they would like to continue having that or not. It's, I assume it was put there because we are so close, areas that could be about, open areas.
I think that may be something we want to talk about at a workshop, either relooking at that structure or talking about any, you know, creative ways that we could go about filling those positions. I know it's a pretty limited area, the way that it was described, as to who can apply for those positions. So it might be that we need to, you know, send out a mailer to those folks or, you know, try something a little bit different to get those filled. And if we can't, we may have to look at changing.
And that was my question, my question was going to be, how are we contacting any of these people outside of here?
And honestly, I don't know. A thought came to my mind as I was thinking about this over the last several weeks is that maybe I might even go out and do a little campaigning door-to-door to those people in Greenwich and see if we could wrestle up some interest there. I do know, and correct me if I have this wrong, Jackie, but I do know that several months ago, there was a gentleman who was running a truck service out of Greenwich area. And they had come to the Planning Commission to discuss some issues that they were trying to get zoning change from Sebby County. Now, Sebby County had the authority over the zoning, but was that the reason they came to us? Because we had our policy set the way it is for Planning Commission?
Yes, at least, that's exactly a good example. That's at least one of the reasons. I don't know if there were other reasons in play, but because we were within that area of influence, they presented it to us and took the Planning Commission's recommendation into consideration.
Okay, good. I don't know how that was ever resolved, but I do remember them coming, so. So very good. I would like to have a workshop on December, is it the 12th or the 10th? For some reason, I think. Yes, the 10th. So December the 10th at 6:30 PM to discuss our legislative agenda items. The legislature meets, starts meeting in January. There is quite a full plate of things that need to be addressed. I know Mr. Lacher needs to do some council member training and he is stating that for a January workshop, if I remember that correctly. So I'd like to try to get this one out of the way. I will have discussed with former State House Representative Chuck Weber to come discuss some things with us about both that agenda and some items that he is working on. And so I'd like to have that workshop on December the 10th at 6:30. And we could also, are we going to be able to just have the overview of the lands, Bel Air land, or do you think that would be ready?
Yeah, so I'll do a kind of an introduction to that, to kind of bring you up to date on the land, because I know that was a topic, it's always a topic, it seems like. So a little history on that. And then, as you said, Mayor, in January, we'll do some additional training. Ted will come in and really get into the budget and stuff and he can talk a little bit more about the financing of that. But I'll have you some basic information, so you can see where the land is, what we've got, what we've sold, how we got to where we're at. I think you'll find it pretty interesting.
Yeah, I think, I look forward to having a comprehensive overview of that because I've gotten bits and pieces here and there, but I don't know that I ever had a comprehensive overview. So I really appreciate doing that, so. So if that works for everybody, we'll be next Tuesday at 6:30, okay?
Bring your pillows, it sounds like.
Hopefully, it won't be that boring.
It's not going to be that long, it sounds like, yeah.
Okay, very good. So item 18, is there?
Mr. Mayor?
Need for executive session?
I think we do have a brief need for an executive session. I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of employee matters pursuant to the KSA 754319 exception for non-elected personnel and inviting the city manager and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:43 PM.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Or is that is a motion?
That is the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
A second.
And any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, same sign. We are in executive session for 15 minutes until 8:43.